Oh, right, right, right.
The whole world is got ten or more trains. Our high speed rail. I think they're limited to certain miles an hour.
Did you get it up?
Well, good evening. It's uh six o'clock and we'll start. We have a custom that when we begin our meetings, we start with the part of regents after which we observe moment of silence for our servicemen and women. So please join with us.
I want to be used to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two public hearings to notice for this evening. The first is for property at forty seven oh two Grandview Drive. The owner is seeking an area variance replacement accessory structure five feet from side parcel boundary of fifteen feet is the required distance. The resulting variance is ten feet. And eleven feet from the front parcel boundary and sixty feet is required resulting in forty nine foot variance.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay.
What we will ask if you're comfortable just because we do have some remote attendance, that podium is positioned to be able to be viewed on the screen.
Okay.
So if you wanna stand there and just tell us a little bit about what we're looking to accomplish.
Okay. So we've been renovating the house and we're trying to get some storage area for some of the equipment that we use for gardening and around the house, some of our bikes and things along that line. Uh we have a small area that we've used as a storage area, but the way this house was built um back in the early, seems like in the early nineteen hundreds, there's not a lot of stores and closets and things along that line in any of the houses, but. Um we're looking to put in shed is twelve by twenty. Um we need some area for parking. And that's the reason that we need the variance on the south end of the of the property. The front end, uh the forty nine foot setback or whatever that that exact amount is. Um there isn't enough room there. The house itself is is like ten foot six from the front setback. And I'm trying to keep the shed so that it's back farther than the house itself. So that was kinda what I was basing the front corner on. And then as far as from the south end to bat the bottom end of the property. Um we wanted to have enough room in our driveway to at least be able to pull in and open doors and have some access in and out of the shed itself. So um there's a there's a right away on the on the bottom end on the south end. That's a twenty foot right away for the town. And we haven't done anything to restrict any of that. We've just changed some of the elevations because the way that the driveway and the building was made originally, there was a small garage. That is so small, it's really useless. Um we've changed the elevation so we pull straight in. And then we'll have the uh the shed will be as high as the driveway. So we sent it, took a picture today of what we've done with some of the grade work so that when you pull in, when you pull straight in. Originally with when we first moved in there, the the slope of the land was so that you couldn't even hardly get close the door of your car. Because it was so pitched. So we've leveled it off and tried to make it so that it was more of a straight in type of a driveway.
Those pictures there when we moved into the property, it had a dog fence right there and we just kinda stored stuff within the dog fence. And we've since taken the dog fence down and the tree that was behind the dog fence. And so we proposed that the new shed would go approximately where the dog fence was. And uh you can see all the stuff that we had piled within the fence, which it would be nice to make it look a little bit cleaner in that area with the shed.
The house doesn't have any type of a full basement. It's just got a a five foot basement. So any type of storage down in there was is not really usable.
You hit your head every time you go down there.
There's nothing we can do down there. So.
The neighbors are all fine with what we're proposing.
Did they send any comments?
Yes, so they've been distributed. Um Michelle had them. They were all fine.
Yep.
The uh neighbors comments were were very positive. Of course, they were they uh anything would be an improvement based on that. That's the gist of what I got.
Well, the house was was very, um you know, it was almost uninhabitable when we got that. Yes. Yeah.
Our standard question is, would it been possible to make this happen without the variance?
I don't think if we we wouldn't have had enough room to have for parking. As as far as the two vehicles coming in and being able to open the doors, not like being, I don't want it to be like being in a parking lot where you can't open a door up and then we wanted to have some some access into the storage shed because that's gonna be the main entry into it. So.
Rider mower.
I measured it the other day. It's like twenty nine feet from the edge of the pole or edge of the of the the house to the front of the shed. And if we weren't moved at ten feet in, there would definitely not be any room for the two cars. And the 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 lot of the property is it's not square, you know? I mean, you've got the the line of grand view comes and it comes in at an angle. And then it's the same thing in the back of the property. So trying to put the shed in and have that square with something was wasn't wasn't working. So that's why there's a difference as far as one edge to the other edge as far as on the south side. So.
To the south is comfortable with us?
Yeah, yep. And there there that's where there is a twenty foot, oh, the town has a twenty foot right away there.
Between our lot and their.
And their property, yeah. So. And Jim Fletcher's been there and he's got to do some work on it.
So that's what you're trying to show there with the black outline is the twenty foot right away? Is that what I'm seeing?
That was in the picture.
I think yes, that's what you see in the black line there. See what he's talking about.
Right, yeah. That was that was something that um I got from that picture I got from Chris Jensen. So that those marks are, the yellow line is something that he had. And then I I positioned the shed inside of it. And we had we had put up, it has a it had a screened in porch when we bought the house and we've since permitted and got a a enclosed porch. And it was ten feet, six inches on the right away on the front. So like I say, that's what I was trying to do with the the shed was to making sure it was leased it back as far as the existing building.
You said that there another rendition we have a contour watch. You said that there's there's a significant pitch to on the on the.
Yeah, Margaret just took some pictures today. I don't know if you'd seen them or not.
We just finished the grade work there.
That's what it looks like today after Matt coughs been up there uh leveling off the driveway because it was so badly slow.
Between that and some drainage. So.
Oh, sure.
Because where you're looking at now is a level driveway before it was pitched off of, we put over two feet of fill in twenty feet away.
One day I slipped right in the mud and just felt it was a mess. So it was, oh, sure you did, Kelly. You could see me going down.
But we've been, you know, we've got a small shed, but it's a canvas shed that's out in the yard right now, holding the lawnmower and other things. We don't wanna get damaged. I've got quite a bit of carpenter equipment in my in my garage, which is, you know, it's only twelve by twenty feet. Um that that I'm using with my equipment um to work on the house. And then we needed the storage shed for like the state lawnmowers and ladders and things along that one.
What are your intentions to do with that canvas shed?
Oh, I'm gonna get rid of that. Yeah. In fact, one of the neighbors said if I don't want it, she'll take it. It's only got another year worth of life in that.
This is like the last final project on the house. We've been working on it for three years and we're doing the grade work and trying to get some storage. And that's kind of the final thing, hope hopefully. So.
If you're not grable, the garage looks like it's in in tough shape. Do you use it to burn cars in now?
No, no, there's not enough. The garage with the bottom building, you know, the lower section there is is over, it's twenty by twenty, but part of it is an entryway for the main part of the house. And then the other part, there's a there's a back entryway to the stairs or to the second floor. So it's mostly stairs and and landings.
Unless you have a really compact car, it's not gonna fit in there. It's low.
Oh, we thought about it, but it's just uh it's just not cost cost effective for us right now. And I'd love to have a garage, but at this age in our, you know, we don't. I could I could talk myself into it, but it's. All right, I understand.
A lot more money.
The cost, the cost is probably the big thing.
Cost is probably three or four times more than a shed.
And I I've just got done putting out the new siding out and I'm gonna, I've got siding left over. It's gonna look exactly like the house. So I want it to be, I want it to look like it belongs there, not something that's just plopped in there.
Well, do you have any other questions to the board? Just that the uh neighbor, the neighbors thought you, what you were doing is going to improve the character of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you're successful, the first picture I saw was an eye opener with with uh what was there.
Yeah, we've done a lot since the spring.
Yeah, the house has had a total renovation.
Yep.
Is the shed uh is it gonna have sit on footer? Is it gonna?
It's gonna be uh it's gonna be a concrete pad, just a concrete pad. It's gonna have electric for lighting and and a couple of outlets, nothing nothing extreme, just so we have some lighting, but um. No, no, I I got enough problems.
No, well, Miss Mrs. Cooper, we are not in the public hearing. There's nobody here with us. Sorry to do tonight. We do have a couple attendees of multi. Can you bring back up our? All right. Well, I'll still put on the record that if there's any comment on this application from anyone in the audience or anyone that's attending virtually, now's the time for that. All right, hearing none.
Okay.
Go back to the board. Final time, any questions? All right. So Miss Mrs. Cooper, we do this every time. We always ask the applicants if they're comfortable closing their application. What that means is that the public hearing will end. We will still deliberate on your application and discuss it amongst ourselves and vote. The deliberations are public in the sense that they can be viewed by the public, but there's no public participation. So once we close the public hearing, we'll accept new information under the deliberations. So I always ask the applicant if they're comfortable closing their application.
Yeah, I just.
As long as nobody has any questions. No, okay.
All right, thank you. Well, that this application is closed. Our our next application is the property at twenty five thirty six State Route three thirty two. And the second is for rear setback, forty feet to thirty feet, resulting in a ten foot variance. So we have a representative from BME who's gonna speak to this application.
James, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Go ahead.
Perfect. Uh good evening, everyone. My name is James Kritikos. I am with BME Associates. Um also on the line this evening is Bill Dowell. Um he is the applicant. We are proposing, we're asking for two variances for this project. Um the property site is about one point seven acres. Um it's located on three thirty two, just south of the um Tom Walls, which is located on the right of that plan, and the Monroe Muffler, which is located on the left portion there. Basically, what we're asking for is relief from both the front and rear setbacks of this property. Due to the kind of unique configuration of this triangular lot as well as the existing zoning requirements, um there's not really any developable room that's feasible if you apply the setbacks as is. For reference, the front setback per the existing zoning is a hundred and fifty feet. Um and the rear is forty. So we did include a exhibit with the application that shows what the remaining area of the property would be. Once you apply those um dimensions and it's about five thousand square feet, um triangular shape, which is kinda located um in that rear parking area where those the bioretention areas, those plantings in the central area. That's really the only location um that's left remaining after the existing setbacks are applied. And then we also have an existing drainage easement that runs through there as well as a uh twenty inch sanitary sewer existing through there. So it really doesn't leave any space uh for the project uh to be developed. So these two uh variances requesting, um we're asking for relief to a fifty one foot front setback. The building itself is actually located closer to sixty feet, uh but there's some of the overhangs from the architectural components um that are located a little bit uh forward of the main mass of the building. And then we're asking for relief uh from the rear setback. Again, just based on the shape and the development of this building, it's it's what we needed to um get this configuration while respecting, you know, the existing sanitary sewer easements. The variances we're asking for are in line with um are more in line with the draft version of the um Uptown Code that is in the works um with the town. Just for reference, that code does um indicate buildings to be located around ten feet from the property line. Which we we can't do here just based on, you know, trying to keep like a circular vehicular movement for safety and pedestrian movement um on the site. But we do believe that, you know, this development, this size, the shape, and then the requested reliefs, you know, do match a lot of the uh existing adjacent properties. As you can see, both Tom Walls and Monroe Muffler are about a consistent uh distant setback from the right away. Um I'd be happy to, you know, go into any other details on the project, you know, access, uh drainage, anything else you guys need, but that pretty much covers the two variances we're asking for this evening. So if you have any questions, um I'd be happy to get more into it.
Yeah, we do, James. So it certainly looks this way. I just want you to see if you can give us the actual footage. What is the setback to Monroe and versus what you were gonna be at?
Uh the setback to. Sky, can you say that again? I guess I'm I'm confused at the question.
Monroe Muffler, your neighbor to the south, right? What's their front setback? They got that office piece that juts out at forty five, but to the main storefront.
Uh they're about thirty feet or a little bit less, it looks like, based on um there's some distances on the site plan there. They're the front of their buildings in line with about the southern part of our property or parking in the front there. So it's about thirty feet is their building to that right away line.
And Tom Walls, it looks like it's further off the road than you. You know what that number is?
Uh I don't offhand. I can certainly get it for you if you give me a second, but my guess is that is closer to about sixty feet as well, just based on the way the building is angled.
I just wanted to clarify that. I have a little question if anyone has. Well, we'll come back to board in a minute. I don't hear any other questions.
I guess I would have one over. You mentioned the Uptown plan and and it's only for, uh we may not have, we may not know as much about where the where the Uptown is as you do. Would you like to elaborate a little bit more? Uh you had mentioned earlier that you thought what you're asking for would be consistent with the Uptown thing.
Uh yes, it's more consistent than what the current zoning is. Um as I mentioned, the existing zoning has a hundred and fifty foot setback. Um and the recommendation in the Uptown Code is to have the buildings located ten feet from the the property line. And then they also have some other um requirements in there. You know, they allow up to like eighty five percent impervious cover. Um I think it's ten foot side and rear setbacks as well. So by asking for the relief from the hundred and fifty front and the forty foot rear, you know, we're we're still within, you know, what the town's kinda goal is for this area.
So I don't know that I agree with that as the goal. I think the goal is having the buildings pushed up front. It strikes me that. And yeah, and parking in the back and 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 just off the top of my head, I don't think you would need any variances on August seventeenth of this year after the Uptown Reform Based Code is adopted. Wouldn't it be better to just, I mean, this board is required to provide the minimum variance necessary to get what you want. I think you can get exactly what you want even more so closer to the road, you know, in thirty thirty days, but no variances.
That's true, although I think that, I mean, we're looking to try and get site plan approval from the planning board next week. Um so this we, this was kind of the method for us to get through the process um in the most um expediated way. So I mean, we're still like the variances granted, you know, we are asking for the minimum necessary based on the current zoning as it stands today. And the and the positioning of the building is really kinda critical just based on, again, the access points and then, you know, maintaining like a circular vehicle movement, you know, in the front and back. So there's no awkward um car three point turnings, you know, in the parking areas. They can just do the loop.
James, do you have any um plan as to what is gonna be the tenant of this building yet?
It's gonna be a mix of different tenants. Um right now, there is going to be three different components to it. So there's gonna be a retail component, an office component, as well as a uh small restaurant tasting room. Um I don't have the exact tenants um locked in. I think the only one Bill was pretty confident on at this point was uh trying to bring full send in to this space, which I think is depicted on the the building renderings that we provided as part of the applications.
Well, that's fine. It's not really relevant. I was just curious.
Yeah, besides besides that one, um there isn't anything, you know, fully locked down yet.
Any other questions from board? All right. At this point, there's nobody here. You can't see the whole space, uh James, but there's nobody here to park the board and town personnel. But I'll still ask, is there anyone that would like to comment on this application before we close the public hearing? All right, so you know one. Is there anything else that the applicant would like to add?
I think we're all set.
All right. So you're comfortable closing, James?
Yes, we are.
All right. Well, that we will close this application. Our first applicant's last. So if you wanna hang on for a minute, James, you can listen to this, go read on yours if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So this parcel has been, you know, listed for sale for development for, I don't know, a long time. I think it would be good to have somebody go there. I don't think this has too many issues. It's not coming any closer to the road than existing neighboring parcels. So I'm in support of it.
Plus, you know, I mean, as Chris had mentioned, thirty days from now, it's nine issue, bro.
Well, no, that building, no, that wouldn't be allowed under the new code.
That wouldn't.
That building of the the road would be blocked and the parking in the back.
So he's saying if you did that with the road cut, that you'd have to come around and then you'd have to do this, you know, three point turn or something, get back out. That's why he wants to be able to have a move back in front.
It just seems like it's competing. And that's that's that isn't giving you the three point turn, but that's the. You know, the whole point of the Form Based Code on this to this area.
However, the other one, it is it is consistent with neighborhood.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, whoever's the first one that put in their Form Based building is gonna be inconsistent with neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
All right, well, let's vote then.
The applicant is requesting a fifty one foot front setback when a hundred and fifty feet is required. Shall the applicant be granted a ninety nine foot front setback area variance for the primary structure? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes, Terrence.
Yes.
The applicant is requesting a, did you do the second part? I'm sorry. I should have said it all together. Applicant is requesting a thirty foot rear setback for a primary structure when forty is required. Shall the applicant be granted a ten foot rear setback variance for the primary structure? John?
Yes.
Uh.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, Terrence.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, under the new code, if somebody wanted to build this building, you have to apply for a variance.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
To be.
Where does that?
Which will be.
To exceed the setback.
Which will be consistent with that section of the neighborhood.
But I think John made the point very well taken. I know, I mean, those three uh frontages really line up.
Well, it's an exciting watch.
Right.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm just watching in the middle of this.
Can we do this before?
We have.
I feel like we did.
You've had it. Yes, that's it.
I've looked at this parcel three times.
Yeah, pretty much the same variances every time.
I mean, truly, no matter what's coming in a month, character of the neighborhood, it works.
Right, right.
Well, yeah, I've never understood. It's that little piece that goes off to the sound of the handle.
So uh the first applicant for this variance told us why it was like that. Had something to do with the railroad tracks. Like that they that kind of abandoned or something. Yeah, the first applicant, the KFC maybe here. Wasn't that gonna be a KFC?
Well.
Like a long time ago.
Yeah, let's let's put a decision down on the record here for this one. That's all right. Okay, so the board's decision is based on descriptions and drawings provided the public hearing held on July twentieth, twenty twenty one, and materials submitted on the dates that will be filled in by the development office. And the board has determined that the applicant does outward deferment to the neighborhood or the community for the variance is granted. The board has considered the unique shape and location of this lot and it's setbacks. Running of these variances is in keeping with unique character of the neighborhood. It's a commercial uh area. This building will be in a similar setback to the neighboring uh buildings on the north and the south. This is the minimal variance necessary to keep in line with both structures. Because of the configuration of the lot, there is an exceedingly small buildable area within code necessitating both rear and front setback variances. The road cut for this parcel also limits the location of a proposed structure. Do you want to have anything else sort of actual plans like that? We'll match the character. Okay, and then we'll add these two standard conditions, which is that this varies specific to the most recent plans that the CBA had changed that uh there is. Parents' condition of a day of permanent condition for one year. Big parents granted, there to change building permits within one year shall be. All right, we will go to our next application. This is four seven oh two Grandview Drive. Would you like to share their thoughts on this one?
I'm sure my thoughts.
Go ahead, John.
I'm very comfortable with it. I think uh pretty considering that the neighbor to the south is comfortable with it. And I think that they've done a great job trying to improve the property and uh. Understand now with pictures that shows today, it's that relevant uh for a more comfortable living. And I think they did a great job with that. And they leveled it up or they transitioned it uh within their property. So I thought that that was positive. So I support this and. Within their property, so I thought that that was positive, so I support this and.
As I said before, with the research, the neighbors were just short of set with. This property being approved and and what they've done so far. And then Dave's question about how come or did you consider the garage and expanding that? Really adding that rather than going over the shed, and I think you made it clear that the cost wise, that was.
I I think it's a pretty tight variance by feet, but. And I I think because there's a public access behind it, to me, it sounds like getting bars and a pool up there, you know. Same deal as far as I'm concerned. Without that, I mean, if there was a house right there, that might be a different story, but to me, it's a substantial variance, but.
Applicant is requesting a five-foot setback from the side parcel boundary when fifteen foot is the minimum required. And a eleven-foot setback from the front parcel boundary when sixty feet is minimum. Shall the applicant be granted a ten-foot area variance for the side setback? And a forty-nine foot variance for the setback from the park, front setback. Uh, John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ellie? Yes. Terrence?
Yes. Board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings and information provided at the public hearing on July twenty, twenty twenty-one, and other information submitted to the. Don't worry appeals on the dates that will be handed by the development office. Board is determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community that put the variance is granted. This is a unique lot. In that it fronts on two roads. Route twenty-one and on Grandview. The primary entrance to the house, the orientation of the house, both faces towards Route twenty-one, rear of the house. Faces in the opposite direction. So although this accessory structure will be located in a front yard, since the parcel has two front yards. And this will be located to the rear of the home. There's public easement, or is it just access?
Well, there was easement, I thought it was a town, right, wasn't it?
Well, I think it's a town. I just want to make sure I say it right. Is this an access or is it?
He said right of way.
I think it's a right of way.
So there's a public right of way owned by the town candidate or. That's held by the town of Canada, but. Rear parcel behind where the proposed accessory structure will be, which will minimize its impact on any potential neighbors. This will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and its improvement for the neighborhood because it will reduce the amount of outside storage. There's also some unique topographical features for the property that require for the limit the potential sites for the proposed. Accessory structure, which have required grading. Probably the nothing, but anything else like that?
Have a question, yes, about whether we should add it or not. They did commit to removing the canvas structure. Uh, we should add that as part of our.
Well, yeah, that this will. So we replace a more temporary canvas accessory structure. We'll post this two standard conditions and show you. There's no one here.
And then that third thing would be the 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 third condition, canvas accessories.
Yeah, but. The variance granted is conditioned upon the removal of the proposed accessory structure as presented by the applicant during the public hearing.
Do you want that building permit issuance when you?
Prior to building.
Yeah, prior to.
And that was right.
You need to, they need the new structure up to whatever. Canvas structure.
Yeah, it's going to be specific completion, right? Okay, so we have prior to this. Very well done, everyone. We have. I've heard a light agenda for. On it.
A light would be nothing.
So pretty light.
That is.
So my, well, I have a suggestion for something to discuss. We just had a training on the new form-based code. It's on Zoom or YouTube. Or we can, we can show that, or we could possibly bring Birdman in to do a training person. And my suggestion was to do a kind of a mock-up review or something.
I think that'd be a great idea. It's gonna be a little bit of change in our normal cadence and rhythm for this form-based code.
Yeah.
And just so I'm clear, this is only applicable in that annual on the north side of town.
Oh, town.
Right, which we're gonna have to go through and apply to each parcel, so we're gonna have to do. That change.
Yep. Sounds fun.
Yeah.
It's not bad. Just tell Lance to get it up. It's fine. It actually.
Yeah, he's not making sure we can say that.
There's no, I mean, just tell him or you get it up, because you drive yourself crazy. But so the form-based code, my understanding, that just found out. You'll be hearing appeals from, you know, the determination of the planning board. And the appeal of that determination to the zoning board. So will be different. I think watching a video will get you where you should be to really. Make the most out of this form-based code, so I think either Birdman or Sean would give a real. Real hands-on thing. By the way, if we're gonna do a mock-up, don't use a current application.
Right.
We've had that issue come up before.
Also, is this something we can present to the town board, have it approved for training hours?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, good.
Look how popular it is just now.
So you'd rather do in-person versus video?
If there's nobody here. Yeah, we don't.
There are no, there will. I'll see what I got.
Well, let me just expand on that for a little bit. Are you saying that you can conduct the training via Zoom?
Yes.
Absolutely.
As opposed to us all coming in here, so. We'd save travel time coming here, right?
So just thinking through this. It will be a meeting that will be here, subject to open meetings, a public meeting, all right?
Yes, whether you're doing it by Zoom or.
So if we do it by Zoom, we've gotta publish that and we'll do it in like for anybody that wants to watch, right?
Right.
If we do it here.
Obviously.
We're, are we still required to have a visual, a virtual component, or are we just doing that for the kind of nice?
I think the town requires it. I think the town about.
So every meeting going forward is always gonna have.
Yeah.
So through the notes.
Let me make a suggestion. You guys were all gonna be here.
Oh, we're.
Next, a month from now. Anyway. In person, like, I thi- I think for this kind of thing, it's gonna be useful, because you, they're gonna have, you know, essentially exhibits, and I think. My, my personal suggestion is do it in person.
Is there, so I have, I just occurred to me, what's the date on the next meeting? Okay, so. So I was surprised. I actually have two, my two daughters are actually going to college this year. So I. Yeah, but our younger one decided she's gonna go early, so I actually have, I know it's move-in week for both of them right around that same time, so.
I guess that sweet, sweet training.
I'm gonna, can I do Zoom was my question.
Yeah, it sounds like they're gonna have to have the virtual report.
All right, so I can actually, but I didn't know if I was required to be here as well.
There's, there's no possibility of having anybody get out of the agenda for next month, and we need.
Yeah, so. But no, the deadline is passed. Yeah, but to have the quorum.
I need three of you to show up in the room.
Although you don't need a term to.
A term.
We're not gonna be training.
That's true.
So, yeah, we could call it a shot.
That's fun. What would you guys want to do?
I think it's a really, the timing is right. I think it's a good idea, and I've been to sessions with briefings and I still am not. Sure of myself when it comes to this, so I I, speaking for myself, I, I think it's a perfect time. And however you think you can deliver the goods, Sean, in person, you know, based on what you're gonna do, whatever, you know.
What if we? It's gonna be a little crazy, but what if we might have a friend who are to come and.
I think that's good.
No, I mean, they're, they're, they are gonna be, I mean.
There's no sense in repeating.
Absolutely.
And the ten of you, if we're taking, doesn't hurt for the ten of you to be in the same room.
And maybe some.
Hundred and six months or so.
Maybe some of the questions will be helpful to.
Right, and to have the two boards who are gonna be interacting ultimately.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so we'll invite the.
You guys are wearing green shirts. Then we'll lose our.
Yeah, we have to call it for me. No, we want power.
We're gonna sit on separate sides of the room.
Yeah.
I take my seat with me everywhere. Good seat.
Yeah, you get the good seat.
We have our bullets here as placeholders, but I don't think there's any good goals for the town board this time, right?
Well, that's what the comprehensive plan.
But they're not looking for a comment about some form-based code right now.
Well, no.
And comprehensive plan is on hold.
You have no comments on these things.
When is the comprehensive plan scheduled for adoption?
August sixteenth.
So our meeting will be there.
Right, so, I mean, do you normally? Work back to the law?
I think like one, give it a chicken code or something, you could. They've got all of ours about.
Yeah. Yeah, so you want chicken out.
No, generally the zoning board hasn't, but can and and has. You know, the planning board generally goes through those, you know, would would at least have a discussion about the content for this code. At the end of each meeting and might give a report back, but the zoning board generally doesn't.
Anything from ordinance today? There's a lot of action on the horizon. And we were talking earlier about ridge lines and, et cetera.
Yeah, without them.
Well, it it, it looks like if we don't do anything. I think we will be more reactive to developers that are in the pipeline and meet thereafter. And John, I've kind of back and forth, and as we want to get it right, but we also. Want to move at a faster pace and crawl.
I'll expand on that a little bit. The discussion has expanded from. Ridge line. View. Issues to. Uh, water view issues. Anything you can see.
Like a steep slope.
Canidig Lake will be considered a. View shed, I guess, for lack of a better description.
Really?
And will have its own set of. Ordinances. That. We will have to consider. And there are many particulars that come with it. There are also many challenges that come in that conversation as well.
Some more of a one-off instead of a uniform type of approach.
Or I I would consider it more a uniform code for anything that is visible from the lake.
And you can also see the variable. Even just something like these catwalkers that are eating up trees. That much of the view is is temporary in the sense that trees don't last forever, and that's part of what the view is, so. That's another variable. It's the kind of thing, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to go back and upgrade over a period of time.
There are considerations that are even larger than that. And I'm not sure that we have our arms around that concept yet. We are. Pretty unique, I will say. Let me say it again. We are pretty restrictive. With our ordinances as far as what is allowed to be built in the town of Canidig Lake versus other municipalities that. Surround the lake, and this. Consideration will make it even more so for a greater area. Than we currently have to residential lakefront development. Those codes for that area will expand with the way it's being discussed now to any property that is visible from the lake. So there's a lot of complications and conversations in terms of. Are we forcing developers to build outside of the town of Canidig Lake? And. Are we losing some potential revenues and potential developments as a consequence of this? And those conversations, we haven't even started to discuss. And those, those are all considerations in addition to the technical details that have to be considered.
What I mentioned earlier, Terrence, when we're looking at scenic views, they don't have to go out the lake. That's become a, an issue that still is compelling and, but the problem with that is measurement. You know, where are you standing and who decides this and that from the lake? It's it's much easier to have.
So let me.
You measure in the winter and summer.
So let me, let me add to that conversation that's just brought up, because I think it was a very good. Uh, segue. So there's a conversation now that we start with doing this. Residential lakefront district, those codes and expanding them basically to whatever you can see from the lake is the first step. And then the next step is to go and make it. Consideration for any view shed. Basically in the town of Canidig.
Well, I think you guys will get one Tuesday night a month back if you start doing stuff like that. I think you're gonna see many applications in the town of Canidig.
We'll see many, many applications.
There's, well, the zoning board will be the only one.
Yeah, right. I was saying, thinking to myself, this sounds like a lot of work for us.
Yeah, we're gonna lay out a couple of building inspectors.
Yeah.
We're gonna be.
One of your buildings.
I'm gonna shut it down.
You see my house, but.
So like I said, there's, there's some action on the horizon.
And. Just give it a whole nine years.
Sure, go for it.
There are many. Pressures being implied. To push this through in a very expeditious manner.
Like before Canidig Lake Shore gets to the building permit process?
I think maybe like before the details are really thought out and worked through.
I can actually, it reminds all those.
And we're not, we're not necessarily on the same page when it comes to speed, but we certainly both want, wanted to be accurate. And I'm, I'm not aware of what's, Sean, would be, what's in the pipeline, but no matter what we come up with. The, I asked the question, something that's in the pipeline is is already grandfathered, because they're, they've made application and they're in the process. So if we were to change.
Guess they made application, right? They have, that's not really true. That's the practice of the town of Canidig Lake. Is to give the courtesy to someone that if you make it before, you apply before the code change. Or consider it in a situation like this, we may not have that luxury. I will point out, assuming the speed is to antagonize Canidig Lake Shores.
Yeah, I don't know if that's. I would say the answer to that is no.
Oh.
I would, no. Even think it's geared towards a project. I think it's more geared towards being. More environmentally conscious to the town of Canidig, and the people that are. Lean that way are trying to push it through quickly to. lean that way are trying to push it through quickly to...
Be act environmentally...
Well, and a lot of them that I know are around the lake, they're actually, those that sort of live, right, is that the people that were, or some of the people that are pushing it through?
Uh, I wouldn't say that.
No, I know a few people that aren't, but, you know...
Well, I guess we look forward to seeing that, but...
And, you know, there's always those people that already have, and they don't want others to have.
That's totally right. The other, you know, live on a middle cheshire, it's, it's on the way to becoming a suburban road. And, and we're halfway there, and, uh, we don't want to sit, now I'm taking your side, we don't want to go full speed when it comes to the old, uh, the cook property that was sold, uh, because people that lived where I live feel like we took a burn with the latest marrow project up on that ridge, and we don't, we're saying timeout, let's not go too fast, because we don't want to go through that again. And so the, there are, the dynamics are huge.
Dynamics are huge.
Yeah, they had any talk about if it's in the watershed or not?
Yes, and, um, that's the second or third thing that is part of the conversation. So the first part is what you can see from the lake. The second part would be ridge lines that are visible from other areas within the town, and then the third phase could be anything within the watershed.
Yeah, but if it's not in the water, there's a big part of the town that's not in the watershed.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that blows your environmental thing out, out of the way, oh, I understand, we need it, the lake's important, you know, so it's...
No, Tom, why?
I don't think I've spoken out of, well, I think I've...
Mike speaks.
Almost every sentence of speed, yeah, and I'm, I'm on the fence because on my own street, I don't want to... But, but in general, I'm afraid of developments over there, that's all.
Okay.
Well, I've got there's, uh, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thanks.
All favor? I, and May, oh, we didn't approve it, okay. Well, I presume, maybe we'll approve minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Second, by kind of casey.
All favor? All right, okay, we're approved minutes on this.
All right.
Was that your first, did you?
Rolling.
No, no. So, it's, it's a real...